Good evening, councillors and members of the public. Before we commence the meeting, can I just draw your attention to the fire regulations on the screen behind me. There are no planned fire drills this evening, so if the bell goes, it's for real. We leave by one of three exits, one, two and three. We assemble under the canopy outside Waitrose. Can I ask everyone please to switch their mobile phones to off or silent. And for the sake of the webcast, I'll just introduce the officers sitting in front of me here. First of all, there's Dan Lucas, our lawyer, Peter Cleveland, head of development control, Rach Callis, who's the senior planning officer on this evening, Louise Yandle, who's the team leader for the southern and western area, and Elizabeth Sims, head of planning. It's the other way around, sorry Louise. Do beg your pardon. Moving on, I'd just ask all members to be respectful of those around you and refrain from defamatory, frivolous or offensive remarks in any form whatsoever. Move on to the main business of the evening. Apologies for absence. Emma?
We have apologies from councillors Jeanette and Stuart Stenit, Stephen Mulliner and Christian Hess. We have substitutes Patricia Ellis and Richard Seaborn. Thank you.
Thanks to the substitutes. Sorry, councillor Holder.
Thank you, Chair. As a courtesy to our guests in the visitors' gallery, I wonder if they could have some lights switched on.
Well spotted, Nick, thank you. Apologies, gentlemen. Questions from members of the public, Emma? Have there been any?
None.
None, thank you very much indeed. Right, we move on to the main item on the agenda, item B1. WA 2016 oblique 0847. It's the approval of reserve matters for 69 dwellings following the outline approval of the erection of 71 dwellings, including access and associated car parking. That was WA 2014 2113, at land to the west of St George's Road, Badshot Lee, as amended by plans received on the 2nd of February this year. And this is going to be introduced first of all by Peter Cleveland and then Louise... Rachel, sorry.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, so there's two applications before committee this evening, and as I said, seeking outline approval... Sorry, seeking approval for the reserve matters for the construction of up to 69 dwellings following the outline approval of WA 2014 2113, which approved the principle of up to 71 dwellings on the site. Just to be aware, we are presenting both of the reserve matters application as one presentation, but you'll be considered both as separate recommendations, so happy to pick up any questions around that, but hopefully that's clear. So with the outline approval, the principle of development for housing has been approved and is not a matter to be considered this evening. Whilst the application was in outline, the detailed means of access form part of that approval, so too were contributions towards SANG at Farnham Park in accordance with the council's adopted avoidance strategy to mitigate the impact of development on the Thames Basin Heath SPA. These matters were all previously agreed by the joint planning committee in approving the outline scheme. So in light of the nature of the outline application, the matters which members are asked to consider are those which remained reserved at the outline stage. This includes the appearance, scale and layout, which were proposed under WA 2016 0847, and that's agenda item B1, and the detailed landscaping matters proposed under WA 2016 1072, and that is agenda item B2. So the previous conclusions regarding the principle of development cannot therefore be revisited at this reserve matters stage. Just as a sort of outline and background, the site comprises an allocation within the Farnham neighbourhood plan under policy FMP14, or 14C, which includes the adjacent site, Little Acres Nursery also, for which a resolution to grant outline permission has been agreed also by the joint planning committee, and that's just subject to completion of the section 106 agreement. This scheme forms part of the council's housing supply figures, and members will note the importance of supporting delivery of such sites, which currently have outline consent to develop, given recent conclusions at inquiry relating to appeal schemes, Web and Works and Backward Point, which members will be aware of. So the scheme as presented has followed consultation with the local community by the developers, which has been encouraged and supported by Farnham Town Council. It's considered that the scheme now proposed is of a high quality, and I will now pass you over to Rachel Callis to take you through the detail of the application. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I'll begin by taking you through some more detail on the reserve matters that are for consideration tonight. If you want to read these back, they're also in your agenda report, but I'll give you a brief overview now. Firstly, turning to item B1. Layout concerns the way in which buildings, routes and open spaces within the development area are provided, situated and orientated in relation to each other. Scale refers to the height, width and length of buildings proposed within a development in relation to its surroundings. Appearance, the aspects of a building or place within a development which determine a visual impression that the building or development makes, and that includes architecture, materials, decoration, lighting, colour and texture. Turning to item B2, landscaping, concerns the treatment of the land, other than buildings, for the purposes of enhancing or protecting the amenities of a site and area, and that includes factors such as screening by fences, walls or other means of enclosure, planting of trees, hedges, shrubs and similar features. Turning to the application site itself, you'll see the location plan outlined in red for you on screen. The application site you will see is located to the west of St George's Road and to the south of Badshot Lee. The Badshot Lee crossroads of village until are approximately 185 metres to the north-east and St George's Road meets the A31 approximately 500 metres to the south. Taking now to the aerial view, you'll see the application site outlined in white for you here. See, the site comprises an open field enclosed by post and rail fencing and hedging at present. The east of the site is the village hall and you have the recreation ground to the west. To the north of the site, you'll see there are residential dwellings. And to the south, you've got some open fields and also the Little Acres Nursery site. As previously mentioned, this site is the subject of a resolution for outline application for up to 80 dwellings. Also worth noting, there's a public footpath which runs along the southern boundary of the site. Take you through a few site photographs now. On the bottom right, this just gives you a view as to where the photographs are taken from. These are from the Little Acres side and from the south of the site. This here is the access with the application site on the right, and again you've got a similar view of the application site just here. And again at the bottom, where you can see actually further afield to the residential on the other side. These are the photos taken from St George's Road and immediately east of the site, that's the village hall mentioned previously here, and the two photos on the top you'll see are taken looking into the site on this direction. You'll see again that post and rail fencing and the hedging which delineates the boundary at present. Moving further around the site now, these are the St George's Road, but from the north angle this time. This site on the top left corner here for you, this is the furthest residential dwelling, roughly here on this photograph, or aerial view. These two photos are as you move along St George's Road, moving into the settlement. Here we've got some views, this time looking from the recreation ground to the west of the site. You'll see an existing building just here and tennis courts, and on the bottom, this is the actual boundary of the site. Turning now to the scheme itself, you'll see the proposed layout plan for you just here. You'll see that the layout is based on a sort of perimeter block approach which incorporates 69 dwellings. See just here, this is a car park proposed to serve the recreation ground in the north-west corner of the site. The scheme incorporates a total of 160 parking spaces for residents, primarily you'll see that's on curtilage parking, within driveways, garages and some parking courts to serve the proposed flats, and some bay parking as well, you'll see an example just here. The majority of the dwellings you will see front directly onto the perimeter road which circulates the site. The scheme does include a total of three blocks of flats, which I'll point out for you. You'll see one just here, here and here. Those are two, some of those are, two and a half stories in height, and the third would be two-storey. Here now, I'll point out for you the location of the affordable housing. Apology, some of the colours are quite faint, but I will point them out to you. These orange areas circulated here, these are the affordable rented units, and those are the three blocks of flats previously mentioned. In the blue, which is harder to see, is the affordable shared ownership units, you'll see some just here, and also at this stretch towards the front of the site. You can see it's roughly distributed in four clusters across the site, and the affordable dwellings comprise a total of 27, and that includes 14 which are affordable rent and 13 shared ownership. These are some details on screen of the open space and play area. You'll see that the open space is proposed in the north-east corner of the site. Within this section here, this is where the proposed play areas will sit, and this is a more close-up view here. There's hedging in the site which will actually delineate the separate play areas within that space, and just a couple of example photographs at the bottom of the features that make up that play space for you. The proposed amenity space, as I say, separated by those two hedges. Some more general points to make about landscaping at this point is it does include appropriate buffers and retention of existing bounding trees, you can see that just on this plan here, and that's between the residential development to the north and the development itself. North of this, also consider that there'll be scope to secure more robust planting along the eastern boundary, and that's the main boundary with St George's Road on the eastern side, and that's a matter secured by way of condition. Turning now, I've got some examples of surrounding architecture, which as I go through the elevations for the scheme, you'll see reflected. You'll see in the area, you've got a mixture of sort of render properties as well as brick, and you've got features such as tile hanging, vertical timber features just here, and a variety of porches, and also bay windows. Turning now to some of the elevations, here you'll see one of those blocks of flats previously mentioned, that's plots 30 to 34 just here, and also 55 to 58. You'll see the majority of the dwellings here have facing brick, with some also featuring white render and vertical tile hanging. Features on these you'll see include dormer windows, canopy porches, bay windows, sort of vertical effect cladding, you've got chimneys and also spiral elements. Similarly, again, you've got a close-up here of some of the two-storey development proposed, that's plots one to three, so these are the properties you'd see fronting directly onto the road on the eastern side. Turning to some wider street scenes now, bit smaller, but you can see them in the wider context. At the top, there's a street scene, elevation AA. This plan, just to explain, just here, shows you where that's taken from, so this is the view actually fronting onto St George's Road on the eastern side, the face of the development that you'll see, and this is the main entrance running through the centre. Turning to street scene B, this is going to be the view facing towards the open space on the site, on the north-east. You'll note from here the variety of the materials, which have been previously pointed out, also show in these two street scenes. You have a key point tonight, you'll know the development is predominantly two-scores in terms of the dwellings proposed, and you've also got a range of roof styles and pitches employed on that street scene. Turning now to the proposed street scenes C and D, these are both sort of internal street scenes within the development. Row C, or street scene C, is this elevation here which runs through the centre of the site, and street scene D runs along this left-hand side, again an internal one, that's just tucked in from the recreation ground, which runs here. Here you can see how the blocks of flats sit within the street scenes quite well. You'll see this is two and a half stories compared to the two-story, but you haven't got a significant variation in height layer. And again, it's worth noting the variety in the roof styles that you can see as well. It's worth noting, this is an example of one of the affordable units on site, where you've got the market housing sitting alongside just here. I'll take you now through the determining issues for the two applications. You'll note that I've divided these between the two applications. Firstly, item B1, which concerns scale, layout and appearance, and secondly, item B2, which is landscaping. So you will note there's a couple of issues which are the same for both applications, but I'll talk you through each of those in turn. Starting with item B1, the matters of principle and technical opinion, firstly looking to flood risk. In respect to flood risk, the key point to note is that the development as proposed does avoid any residential dwellings in the north-east portion of the site, which does fall within flood zone two, and that's a consistent approach with the outline application that was found acceptable on that basis. In respect of the infrastructure contributions and the impact on the Thames Basin Heath SPA, again, these were matters considered at the outline application. However, because this does propose a reduction in units, it is necessary to secure a deed of variation for both of those matters to capture the reduced number of dwellings there and reduced amounts to reflect that. Matters of judgment for this application, design and impact on visual amenity. Note, the report recommends that the proposal would be acceptable in visual terms, and it's generally considered to reflect the character of the surrounding area. In respect of the impact on residential amenity, it is considered to provide sufficient distance to neighbouring properties to avoid adverse impacts on neighbouring dwellings. In respect of the standard of accommodation, having regard to the separation distances, light, outlook and the size of accommodation provided, it is considered to provide a good standard of accommodation. In terms of provision of amenity and play space, there is provision made there for play areas within the scheme, such to meet the required size standards. Waste recycling and cycle stores are generally provided within the private garden areas or garages of each dwelling or communal stores in the case of the blocks of flats. In terms of car parking standards, the amount of car parking spaces proposed do exceed the council's guidelines, and there is also the additional car parking provided for the recreation ground. Now move on to item B2, which is landscaping. The matters of principle and technical opinion for this application include biodiversity. That is a matter which was considered at the outline application, where we're following on from this. It is considered that a condition is appropriate to secure a detailed landscape and ecological management plan, and that's really to secure additional ecological benefits following once the development is commenced. The matters of judgment in this case are design and impact on visual amenity. The proposed landscaping scheme is considered to help retain the character of the area. The proposed landscaping details are also considered acceptable in terms of the impact on residential amenity, in particular, that's looking at the planting and trees which provide that buffer between the residential neighbours to the north and the application site itself. And the submitted details in respect to the provision of amenity and play space are considered to be appropriate, specifically that includes private rear gardens for each of the dwellings, and also communal shared gardens for the proposed block of flats. If I can now turn members' attention to the update sheet for item B1. This refers to the legal agreement which is required to secure a deed of variation to amend the figures in respect to the SPA and education. As that remains outstanding, the recommendation has been updated to include a deadline for the completion of that legal agreement, and that has resulted in an additional recommendation B added on there. And I'll turn you to the recommendation itself for item B1. The revised recommendation A is therefore that the reserve matters of layout, scale and appearance be approved, subject to a section 106 agreement to secure a deed of variation to the original legal agreement, to amend the education and SPA figures by 10th of October 2017, and subject to conditions one to five on the agenda report. Recommendation B states that in the event that the requirements of recommendation A are not met, that permission B refused. The recommendation for item B2 is that the reserve matter of landscaping be approved, subject to conditions. Thank you.
Rachel, thank you very much indeed. This is an item members to talk to right now, councillor Storey.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. As you're aware, this is in my ward, and can I first of all say, how long is it since we've had a matter at joint planning which hasn't been subject to public speaking? And I think that's a testament to the fact that the developers, the officers, some members and of course the local community association have worked particularly hard together to make sure that they've got things as satisfactory as they can for all parties. Now, I'm sure nobody is 100% happy, but it's probably as good as we're going to get. I have no great issues with the layout or the scale or the appearance. I do have a few little niggles which I'd like to just bring to your attention. There's a couple of things which are inconsistent between the two applications this evening. On page 20, we have a comment here that the recreation ground parking will feature a form of reinforced grass, and then on page 149 in the other application, officers are not satisfied that this will actually be acceptable. So we need to sort that out. There is a condition that in the second application, that this has to be agreed before any construction can go ahead, but I think we need to iron that out to make sure it's consistent. Also, on page 22, there is note that the recreation ground car park hedging and boundary treatment should be sufficient to mitigate against noise. And again, in the second application on page 150, noise is not mentioned, it's only visual amenity which is brought forward. Again, I think that could probably be dealt with by a change to condition six, which is the condition which requires detailed planting for the St George's Road boundary to add detail for that particular north-western boundary where it goes to green croft. On page 23, I'm glad to see that unlike some recent applications, we've had the technical standards, which are optional, as we understand, until we get our local plan in place, are in fact not just met but exceeded, so that's nice to see. Page 25, reference to parking in the main body of the development, I regret that there are so many tandem spaces. I particularly dislike them because it causes all sorts of difficulties with people needing to get one car out, particularly where we've put tandem spaces in front of a garage, and I'm sorry to see that, but okay, we'll have to accept that in view of all the rest of the items which are compromised. Item, page 28, I'm sorry that the deed of variation hasn't been sorted out yet, but at least the principle of development is established, so we don't have to worry about the legality of this under the habitat regulations. Page 32, condition three, I'm particularly pleased to see that dormer windows are not going to be permitted in those plots which have high visibility of their rear roofs, which was something that we brought up at a meeting between members and officers, so I'm pleased to see that condition. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you very much, councillor Storey. Turning to councillor Oils.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, like councillor Storey, I'm really encouraged by this. It's nice to see reserve matters come through which are subject, or have been the subject of cooperation between the applicants, the developers and the local community, and I think it shows. It's a great improvement on the indicative layout that we had at outline stage. I see there's even more of the existing trees have been rescued, we've even got hedges to keep councillor Coburn happy all the way through. I just think it's good, Chairman, that the houses aren't going, probably aren't going to win any architectural awards, but they're in the local vernacular, and I think it's going to be a good development and a nice place to live. The only thing I would ask the officers to consider is, again councillor Storey mentioned condition three, it's not Article 2 bracket 3 land, so there's no restriction on permitted development of two-story extensions on the rear of the properties, so every property could have a three-storey deep, three-metre-deep two-story extension so that a 21-metre separation could potentially come down to 15 metres, and I wondered if we could consider that the removal of PD rights could extend to Part A of permitted development rules as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll get the officers to come back on those points and then councillor Coburn.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I'll try not to be too repetitive. It's interesting watching how this has grown out of the seed, I suppose. When we first did the Farnham design statement way back, I think it was adopted in 2010, there was no Badshot Lee Community Association, and when I said, well, what's Badshot Lee got, well, nobody answered basically, so I pinched something out of a book and I got a lot of abusive letters saying, that's not what Badshot Lee's like, and I said, well, tell me what Badshot Lee's like, and then we could put it in our design statement. Since then, we have seen the community association grow into a really effective body representing the community, and when the neighbourhood plan was first started, they very proactively went out and asked every single house in the village, at which sites, if sites had to be developed, would they put in which order. So, you know, they went from being a sort of moribund or even non-existent community association to be an absolute example, and I have to commend the developer as well because they have worked so hard, I don't know whether I'm commending anyone actually sitting in the gallery or annoying them, but, you know, it has been really good to see the way this has changed over the time. There's been quite a lot of changes and quite a lot of dispute over it, and I'm delighted, as councillor Oils has just said, that I think we've got something here that the community can be proud of, we've kept some of the green, we've got the extra parking, all the things that were brought up very, very early on in the discussion. So, like everybody else, yes, I mean, I wouldn't have it exactly like this, but then, you know, that's life, isn't it? But I think, you know, we should really congratulate everybody concerned, including the officers obviously, who've worked hard, and I think it really is a model, you know, nobody wanted anything on this site, let's be honest, you know, we wanted it to stay green, but given where we are in the planning system at the moment, what we have to do on these greenfield sites is work together to get something that is acceptable. greenfield sites is work together to get something that is acceptable. This is right on the outskirts of town. Badshotley is very separate, it's got its own character, and it's important that this little development, which I've said before, joins the recreation ground to the village hall, has to work for the existing residents and/or so for the new residents, and I think it does now work for everybody, which is the whole point of the planning system, really, isn't it? So I give this my wholehearted support. And I would just say, though, you know, keep talking, because as you go through with some of these conditions and landscaping, you know, just keep talking, can't do any harm, and you may just get an extra tree or something nice, you know, that sort of just finishes it off nicely. So, you know, I'm really thrilled that it's come, and we're actually going to perhaps see something built in Badshotley.
Thank you, councillor. councillor Holder.
Thank you, Chairman. My comments are about the education contribution on page 11, reduction of £197,542. I see on page 56 that the actual total figure for education is to be reported orally, and on the update sheet, they say nothing has yet been received. So I don't see how we can possibly agree a reduction on a figure we don't know what it is. If this £197,542 is pro-rated for two buildings, which is a reduction in number of dwellings, that's £98,500 per house. If we multiply that up by 69, we've got £6,800,000. I would just like to know what the total education contribution is.
Thank you. I'm sure we'll get there in a moment. councillor Frost.
Thank you very much indeed, Chairman. I'm not going to repeat what my colleagues have said, but I'm delighted we've reached this stage. I've just got two points. One is on page 7, where it says right at the, no, page 43, I've got two page numbers. And right at the bottom, it says, parameters of scale have not been provided at this stage, but the application indicates that building heights would not exceed three stories. I would like us somewhere in the report, and it may already say it, to actually say it will not exceed two and a half stories. I'd hate to have three stories there. And my second point is, when we looked at the outline permission in 2015, on page 48, it talks about the County Highway Authority, and at that point in time, I made the point that in fact, we shouldn't have to wait until the occupation of the 25th dwelling before we pay an index link sum of £75,000 towards works to provide pedestrian crossing facilities and environmental enhancements. We need them right at the beginning. This is what infrastructure is all about, and we're always complaining about it. And if you look at little B, we have to wait till the 30th house is occupied before we provide lighting on the footpath. In that area, we need lighting on the footpath because it will be well-used. We've got the village hall opposite the development, and people will use that, and there's a nursery there. So it does seem to me that we ought to, and it's disappointing that they didn't take that on board last time, because they were aware of it, and I think we should change that. I know there's a legal agreement about this, but I think there is nothing to stop us talking with the developer to get these things done at a much earlier stage. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. councillor Hunter.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I wonder if there's going to be provision made for the communal car parking for charging points? I did a walkabout in my ward on Saturday, and there were no less than half a dozen cars on charge, and not having charging points precludes those people from owning electric vehicles where they would need charging points.
I think it's time Peter Cleveland or Rachel, who's going to take the various points, starting with car parking and moving on, hedging.
Thank you, Chairman. Sorry, I was just catching up on the specific points. I'll try and take them in in order from the start. So, sorry. Councillor Storey picked up regarding the surfacing of the car park in particular and some of the landscaping along the northern boundary there. In terms of the level of detail, in terms of the planting along that boundary, our tree and landscape officer is content with that, and that's why we haven't asked for additional provision as part of the landscaping scheme. But they've proposed the concrete hard standing for the car parking spaces, which we don't think would be particularly attractive. So we sought, notwithstanding those proposed details, to secure that under the landscaping detail. And I think there's a slight, maybe we weren't clear in terms of how we presented it, but the landscaping looks at the detailed planting, fencing and surface material, whereas in terms of the layout, in terms of siting that car park there, we then looked at the residential amenity. But because you've got two applications, there's slightly different assessment of the impact of that car parking area in that area. So I think that was the point that was at question, but we're content that we've got appropriate detail to deal with that boundary treatment and planting to soften it. So it's just purely about the finished material which we've secured in landscaping terms. So I think that picks up on that question. If I'm not clear, I'm happy to come back. Councillor Oils picked up on a permitted development removal, which we saw under the item B1. And I'll put that down to members to consider, and I think it was specifically you were concerned about two-story extensions on the rear of properties. We haven't done that full assessment, but there's potential to do two-story extensions. There's obviously a number of restrictions that sit with that, but if members want specifically reference and remove permitted development rights for two-story extensions, we can list that provision specifically in the condition that removes the roof extensions as well. So we can put, in condition 3, we can put that specific provision in if members feel that's appropriate. In terms of, there were some comments regarding the scale, and I was turned to page 7, and apologies, I couldn't actually see where specific reference was made to that. So I'd asked through the chairman if, just to be clear, I wasn't quite sure the point that was being raised there. But the properties are effectively, we've got the full detailed plans in front of us, and they, well, they are proposing two-and-a-half-storey properties, and this one on the left of your screen here is effectively the highest building you'll get, which has got two-story buildings of rooms in the roof, so you've got three stories of accommodation, but the third story is sat within the roof space. So I don't know if that's helpful on that point. And I think that the point of clarification, I think in terms of the page numbering, apologies if they're confusing, the yellow papers are the original outline report, and I think that picks up on the two comments. So that was the report to members previously. And page 7 was that one, so I've just been pointed out to colleagues, so I was getting confused. But yeah, that's the report that's been agreed, and I think that's the same point that councillor, or picks up on the same point that councillor Holder raised with regards to the education contribution to reported update, already updated, and that was again related to the outline planning application. So it was as reported in there. So apologies if there's any confusion in there. Tried to keep the different colours pages as an appendix there, just so members could see what the outline report said about the scheme leading in to support the reserve matters. I think that picks up on the points, and Rachel may be able to pick up on anything else.
Highways and lighting and electric vehicle charging points, I think, are three others.
Apologies, yeah. So in terms of the infrastructure contributions, they have been secured and agreed, and that's what we agreed under the outline approval. What we can do, we can't insist upon it, but we can approach developers on members' behalf and raise that as a point of concern and see if we can agree an alternate provision. But as I say, that has been secured and agreed under the original section 106. But in terms of communal parking, oh, sorry, communal charging, we didn't have that, require that as part of the outline approval, but if members feel it's necessary, again, we could consider the suitably worded condition to secure some of those on the site. But the majority, we've only got really the communal parking space up the top next to the recreation ground, so that would be the location for that, but we'd have to consider that, how that would, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. councillor Adams.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm delighted to hear from the Farnham councillors, the cooperation that's occurred between the developer, Farnham Town Council, and the local community association. I think that, as councillor Coburn said, is a model that could well be followed elsewhere in Waverley. So, and I'm very happy with the layout, I think that's good. I'm very happy with the density, I think on the edge of the village, that's appropriate. My question actually relates to the internal road. Is that two-way in each direction, or is it going to be one-way round the main circuit? And how wide is the internal road?
Thank you. Thank you for the question. I'll start the first part of that question, I think Louise is just quickly measuring for me. It is two-way roads that are proposed through all of that, and that is something that the County Highway Authority have reviewed, particularly in terms of refuse vehicles and those larger vehicles actually being able to manoeuvre around the site. And bear with me, I'll just get the answer to the width. And five metres in width.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chairman. If I may come back, we heard from the officer, the set answer about my inquiry about the footpath and the lighting. It was the same answer, or a similar answer, to the one he gave two years ago. It is possible to talk with developers and renegotiate something if it's for the benefit of the community. And I believe lighting, et cetera, is necessary for the community in that area. It's right on the edge of the village, and it is opposite the village hall, and people will go across there with their children, and it's a bend. So whatever we can do, and I remember saying this last time, working with the developers and the community association, it would be helpful if we don't give stock answers, but we could try. And please, if they don't want to do it, say, well, I've tried, but no. Thank you.
councillor Coburn.
Thank you, Chairman. As you know, I try not to come back, but I'm just a bit worried about electric charging points. I don't like muddying the waters with everything. Getting some extra parking on this site for the recreation ground has been a nightmare. We've had all sorts of fiddling around and interference and goodness knows what. We've now got some parking. Now, I'm not saying that everybody in Badshotley's got an electric car or a hybrid, but I really don't want that car park to be full of cars charging up over the weekend, when it should be full of cars delivering children to the recreation ground. So, you know, I don't think we can be all things to all men at all times, and I do really have to, well, I would take advice again from the community, but, you know, that is definitely a much-needed provision. Parking in Badshotley is a nightmare, and, you know, the community association fought very, very hard to get that parking, and I would like it for the recreation ground. And I really don't want to see a whole load of other uses in there, you know, that just sort of slightly goes against what we're trying to achieve, which is to get people playing sport on the recreation ground.
Yes, and indeed, you don't want people just driving there to charge the cars up. You want to do that at home, I think is the normal format. councillor Hunter, you want to come back?
Having walkabout on my ward on Saturday, I nearly tripped over four charging cables running across the pathways, so that's what it is today, and you can't get away from it. It's...
It is modern living to have a charging point in the garage or on the house. councillor Hyman.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a couple of points, three or four points, actually, of clarification. Drainage in respect of page 16, I've noted, the lead local flood authority says that condition 16 of the outline requires a drainage strategy to be submitted, and no drainage information has been provided. Obviously, I accept that it's likely that that's been carried forward in a condition that it is a pre-commencement or whatever to have those details. I'm wondering, is that an objection or not? Are the lead local authority saying that they object because that that hasn't been submitted, or why are they saying it? If it's not an objection, I suppose, is a question there. Another matter, I thought that quite some time ago, we'd, I thought we'd established that a mistake had been made in calling this, what we're calling the flood zones, the flood zone 3, particularly 3A is a functional flood plain, flood zone 3 is where we shouldn't be building houses. We're being told that this is all flood zone 1, but flood zone 2 touches the corner, and I'm wondering whether we're being correctly advised on that, because I think it's flood zone 3 that actually touches the corner. So if you can just clarify that for me, because, just to make sure that if it is a mistake, it's not constantly carried forwards. I've got a concern in respect of the number of times and number of occasions in this application that we're told that the principle of this development has been established, and it says on page 18, and I think councillor Storey also referred to it in saying that we don't need to consider such matters, and in the introduction at the beginning, it was said that the principle of government can't be revisited at this reserved matter stage. And my understanding is, and I'd like officers to confirm or not whether my understanding's correct, that the Barker case, C29003, established in UK law, the catch-all principle, where if we're aware that there's a risk of significant effects, and they haven't been taken into proper consideration at a previous stage in a multi-stage planning process, then that catch-all principle applies, and that, I think, was the whole point of the Barker case, to establish that. So, and I don't think anybody's turned around and definitively said, no, that isn't correct, and that Barker doesn't apply here. Apart from that, I don't think, yes, finally, of course, there is another matter which we've came up against in our discussions in ONS in respect of the CIL charging, and that is that there was a change to the CIL regulations, I think recently, which requires that principles be applied, that there has to be, there has to be evidence in respect of justification for the CIL charges. And in terms of the SPA contribution, we've got no evidence that the 8 hectare per thousand figure is correct, it could be 100% out or anything, and so I think we need that evidence. And so if you can confirm, we do need to have evidence to support CIL contributions, then I think that'll do. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. First of all, pre-commencement SUDs, flood zone. Peter.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, so the lead local flood authority have commented on the application, and it's written as they commented, it's not an objection, they just haven't got that pre-commencement condition as part of the reserve matters, which the applicants could do, but the other mechanism is a formal discharge condition. We've still got that pre-commencement style condition, condition 16 on the outline approval, and they won't be able to come forward and develop the site until that has been formally discharged. So it's still controlled, it's covered off there. Thank you, Chairman.
Flood zone 2, 3? I think the leap lap is flood zone 2, isn't it?
That's it. And if you've referred to page 71 of the agenda, it clarifies that part of the site, second to last paragraph, it's nonetheless, the applicant accepts the site partially located within flood zone 2, and the proposal therefore must comply with consequential test, which was then went on to be met. So it is the clarification in the report, the officer report confirmed it was flood zone 2. Hopefully, that's helpful. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. And finally, Dan Lucas, I think, if you'd like to...
Yes, thank you, Chair. Picking up on councillor Hyman's point about the EIA issue, essentially, the agenda at page 59 deals with this, and you can see a previous screening opinion was actually provided, and that screening opinion concluded the proposed development for 85 dwellings would not constitute EIA development. So in that regard, the screening opinion has been provided, it hasn't been challenged... So in that regard, a screening opinion has been provided, it hasn't been challenged, that means it's extant and live for this particular site. Note two, from 85, it's been reduced in this current application to 69. So in that vein, the EIA screening opinion actually will still apply because it's been reduced in what's coming forward before you. Your note also at page 24, the schedule for schedule two EIA development, the actual amounts increased to actually allow the tolerance to increase as a matter of law. And because that tolerance did increase, because this was for 85 and the tolerance actually increased at schedule two, your note there, the matter falls away. So that deals with that particular point in that vein. Councillor Hyman is correct, you can still look at EIA in a reserve matter, and it's dealt within the regulations, but because of that screening opinion now pertaining to 69 dwellings, there is no environmental impact assessment required. I think that deals with that point there, Chair.
Thank you very much. Before we move to the recommendation, can I take the amendment to condition three and the permitted development rights, councillor Als?
Yes, Chairman, thank you. Yes, I would like to propose that condition three include the exclusion of permitted development group A, which is extensions to dwellings. Thank you.
And I'm very happy to second it.
Thank you very much indeed. And can we also be talking with the developers, reference lighting in the initial stage of the development and electric charging points on each unit? No? No? Okay. Peter Cleveland.
On the point about the contribution, the lighting, we will, of course, go back and see where we can go with them, and apologies if I wasn't clear on that point. Just on the condition regarding class A, are you wanting to remove all extensions to rear of properties or side, or is it just a two-story extension? I just wanted to be clear, just to make sure.
I don't think there's any scope for not excluding, I don't think we can sort of say exclude two-story extensions, because it would get a bit finite, wouldn't it? It would be section something, clause something, bracket, close bracket, et cetera. I think they're all, they're sort of items under one heading, aren't they?
Thank you, yes, that's correct. Class A does cover all extensions to property, so that's why I just wanted to be clear, the discussion was there. But if members would like that applied, we can apply that. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Hyman, you want to come back?
Yes, just in respect of the responses that are received to my questions, if I refer you to page 71, which is page 35 on the yellow, and you see halfway down there, it's the first, second, third, fourth, fifth paragraph, the bulkiest, I suppose, of them there, it says there, the land level below 72.66 aod have the potential to flood in a one-in-a-hundred year flood event, thus falling within flood zone two. Every other planning application I've ever seen, the one-in-a-hundred-year flood event refers to flood zone three, and so that's what I was querying. And I think if we went away from here, we'd find that actually we're still carrying on making this mistake. But that there, if someone will please check and confirm that a one-in-a-hundred-year flood event, the one percent event, is flood zone two, because I'm saying it's not, it's flood zone three. And the other thing, in respect of my question in relation to the catch-all principle, I wasn't referring to EIA specifically, and I do fully accept that this isn't EIA development. So the response there was nothing to do with my question, although obviously the response was correct, had it referred to a different matter. I was asking for confirmation that the catch-all principle, as established in the Barker case, applies to both EIA and habitats. This isn't EIA, but it is a habitats application. So that's the question, is whether the catch-all principle applies to both habitats and EIA. But I'm not saying this is an EIA application, so I would like clarification of that, thank you.
Thank you. I'll ask Dan Lucas to come back on that one, then we'll move to the recommendation.
Do you want to take a vote on condition that amendment?
On three, yes. Vote first, sorry.
The catch-all principle does indeed apply, and thank you, councillor Hyman, for confirming, because you kept your initial question quite generic, and normally your responses are in relation to EIA. So thank you for your clarification. Indeed, you're correct, it does also relate to the habitats regulations, and I'm grateful for your clarification on your point. That answers that particular question, yes, it does apply.
Thank you very much. Can we have a vote, please, on the amended condition three to move the permitted development rights?
And for officers.
And for officers to discuss with the applicants regarding lighting, road lighting. We have a proposal in second, can I have those in favour of that amended recommendation?
Okay, that's 17.
Those against? Abstentions?
Two.
Thank you very much indeed. So moving on to the recommendation. Recommendation A is the reserve matters of layout, scale and appearance be approved subject to a 106 agreement, secure a deed of variation to the original legal agreement to amend the education and SBA figures by the 10th of the 10th, 2017, and subject to conditions one to five on the agenda report and the amended condition three. May I have those in favour, the recommendation to grant? Please show.
Okay, that's 18.
Those against?
One.
Thank you very much. Permission is therefore granted. Move to recommendation B. A permission be refused if conditions of the recommendation A are not met. Those in favour of that recommendation, please show.
That's unanimous.
Unanimous, thank you very much indeed. Moving on then to item B2.
Yes.
Which is the approval of the reserve matters, brackets landscaping, following the outline approval for the erection of 71 now 69 dwellings, including access and associated car parking under WA 2014 2113 at the land at west of St George's Road, Badshotley. And we can move, I think, straight to the recommendation, members. Recommendation is that reserve matters of landscaping be approved subject to the conditions. Those in favour, please show.
That's unanimous.
Unanimous, thank you very much indeed, members. That completes our meeting. Thank you very much indeed.